I would like to call the Fairfield County Regular Meeting to order. Winsboro, South Carolina, Monday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, six o'clock P. M. And while, and while I'm at this point, I want to say Happy Valentine's Day to, to everyone. Um, can we get approval of the agenda?
It's been moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Chairman Bill.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to put something on the record. Chairman Bill and fellow council members, I think at every council meeting, myself or a citizen, request that we are being transparent. At receiving the agenda on Friday, I have several concerns in which I sent an email to you and fellow council members. When looking at the agenda, I noticed several ordinances. There is no address or tax map number on the agenda. In the public notice in the newspaper, there is no tax map number or address. I would like to know who is responsible on the agenda team that make sure these agendas are correct. We need to make sure again that we are providing our citizens with all the information necessary. On tonight's agenda, we have a third reading for ordinance, ordinance number seven eighty-four. Well, on January the tenth of our agenda, we had a first reading by title only. That was on the tenth. On the twenty-fourth, there was no second reading on ordinance number seven eighty-four. And now tonight, on February the fourteenth, we having a third reading on seven eighty-four. And unless I stand corrected, I don't see a second reading that we ever had on order number seven eighty-four.
Thank you, um, Mr. Paulie. Um, you are absolutely correct. And so tonight, item G. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna table item G, um, till we get the second reading. You, you, you're right.
Mr. Bill, one other thing I want to say is, I think it only, and correct me if I'm wrong. I think it only requires one public notice in the newspaper fifteen days out for a public hearing. It looks like we are doing three notices in the newspaper per public hearing, which we are spending a lot of money on each hearing when it only requires one. Um, and I think we need to look into that as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by?
Aye.
We're down now to the invocation vice chair Green.
Let us pray. I think he's checking to make sure he can hear me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings we have received. We ask you give us your grace and your guidance as we make decisions benefiting the citizens of Fairfield County. And on this day of love, Valentine's Day, we ask that you open our hearts to unconditional love and respect for one another. In your holy name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. We, we're now down to the approval of minutes, regular meeting, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Can we get a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Prose his name. Thank you. Um, we're down now to item five, public presentation, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this proclamation is proclaiming February as Black History Month. It reads as follows. Whereas we are given an opportunity each February to honor the struggles and triumphs of people from the African heritage, knowing that the purpose of Black History Month is to make all Americans aware of the struggle for freedom and equal opportunity. It is also a time to celebrate the many achievements of blacks in every field. And Fairfield County desires to celebrate these many achievements and, and contributions made by African Americans towards the furtherance of our cultural, spiritual, and economic development. Fairfield County seeks to recognize our homegrown prominent African Americans such as Mamie Peanut Johnson, one of three women to play in the Negro League and the only woman to take the mound as a pitcher. A street in Ridgeway has been named in her honor. Herman Young, in nineteen sixty-five, became the first black police officer with the Winsboro Police Department. In nineteen seventy-two, he became the first black E. M. T. with Fairfield Memorial Hospital. Herman Young was the first black to be elected sheriff in Fairfield County in nineteen ninety-two. In two thousand fifteen, Young was awarded the South Carolina Order of the Palmetto, the state's highest award, for his sixty-two years in law enforcement. Young enjoyed many honors, including being named Sheriff of the Year in nineteen ninety-six and served as the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve Sheriff's Association President. Sheriff Herman Young founded the Sheriff's Success Academy, a foundation designed to support underprivileged youth to give them opportunities they would not otherwise receive. And Taft Henry served in World War Two as a Buffalo Soldier of the Twenty-Fourth Infantry Regiment. Henry entered the military on June thirtieth, nineteen forty-six, and served until September thirtieth, nineteen sixty-eight. His commendations include Combat Infantry Badge, World War Two, Korean Medals, and Letter of Appreciation from the South Korea Army Chief for the sacrificial service in defense of South Korea. These are but a few of the African Americans who have had a profound effect in Fairfield County and on our society, who persevered with courage, faith, and determination to build fruitful lives for themselves and their families, while immeasurably contributing to those around them. And now therefore be it resolved that the people of Fairfield County do hereby proclaim as Black History Month with the highest regard and esteem for African Americans as examples of citizenship and service at its best in the county. So order this fourteenth day of February, two thousand twenty-two, and has been signed by all members of council and myself.
Thank you. Um, can we, can we get a motion to approve the proclamation?
It's been moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Prose his name. Set the record show seven zero for the Black History Month proclamation. Item six, first public comment, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of council, two persons signed up to speak. The first one, Landrum Johnson.
Thank you very much, uh, council. My name is Landrum Johnson. I live at, uh, forty-two eighty-nine Syrup Mill Road uh, in District Five. Uh, I am speaking on behalf of my neighbors in the, uh, Syrup Mill, uh, Center Creek Road area who are concerned about the appropriate and clean development of industry and, uh, living conditions within that area. Uh, our concern at this point is the potential sale of the piece of property within the Blue Granite Industrial Park. There are two concerns that we'd like to express. The, the first one is that sale seems to be done without restrictions, which seems, uh, to invite potential abuse, uh, of the neighborhood uh, and does not seem appropriate for, uh, individuals that have already purchased and developed property within that industrial park who are abiding by those restrictions, do not require, uh, a new purchaser to do the same. Uh, the second concern, uh, is for the price of the property, which we feel like is relatively low. Uh, it is certainly within, uh, current, um, appraised values. But more importantly, uh, we all are trying to work towards a good, clean, well-located sewer plant within Fairfield County that will open up development for the entire county. Uh, we have, uh, the current council has done a very good job of securing funds to build the plant and where everybody thinks it's the best place to go on Broad River. Once that plant is, uh, up and running and sewer is available, uh, then there's no question that all property values in Fairfield County will rise, particularly within this, uh, uh, industrial park where the, the price per acre now will probably look very low. Uh, so that, uh, is a, a, another concern. And finally, let me just, uh, close by asking the members of the Joint Water and Sewer District in Fairfield to, uh, at, move at all haste towards a reasonable negotiation process that will enable, uh, the plant to be, uh, begun construction on the broad and start opening up good, clean development here in Fairfield County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District One, Fairfield County. I have, I have an issue with us spending money, no matter where the source of revenue may have come from, as the five hundred thousand dollars in ordinance seven eighty-eight. And, and the reason I have an issue is, is that we don't even know where we stand financially. We haven't done an audit in over a year. We haven't completed a balance sheet in over a year. We haven't done an income statement in over a year. And we don't know where we really stand financially. Am I against the spec building? No. I am against non-prudent spending of money without knowing where we stand. Now and then, you know, we quote a one-day figure of the, uh, fund balance, which is mostly meaningless. But we never quote the balance sheet. We never quote the income statement. And I repeat, it's been over a year since we've done any of it. It's been over a year since we've done an audit. And if I recall, the state required you to complete an audit. This may even hold us up in funds from the state. Not sure of the regulations, but those are the general regulations. So how can we vote on spending five hundred thousand dollars when we don't really know how much money we have? We don't know our financial condition. That would be like buying a million-dollar house without having looked at your finances before you do it. Oh, this is something I want, and we think we can afford it. No. Know where you stand before you spend money. And this is one example that is obvious we can't know. So don't try and say you do know unless you're hiding things from the public, and that's even worse. So please, do your due, do your due diligence before you spend five hundred thousand dollars and know where you stand financially. Get an audit done. Get a balance sheet done. Get an income statement done. Don't wait a whole year before you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we're down to item seven, public hearings. Item A, in order to approve the sale, sale of certain parcels shown as parcels ten and eleven, tax map number one eighty-four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero nine six on the master plan for the Fairfield County Commerce Center. So I want to open up this public hearing at six thirteen. Do we have anyone to sign? Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. Doug touched on this at the top of the meeting, and it's true throughout. A lot of details are missing. Some of the key details that are missing, if, if it's a hearing, a hearings mean you, you, you make a judgment on the, on the situation, on the proposal at hand. And to do that, you have to have certain factors. And when you have the word sale in there, that must mean there's going to be money exchanged. And when money's exchanged, all the citizens in the county are impacted by it. But we don't know how much money this is. So the most vital, important part of this, we don't know. We don't know why. What's the purpose of this? Why are we doing this? Who's it gonna benefit? And who are we buying it from? Now, unlike some of the other ones, it does have a tax map indicator on there. But there's just solely lacking detail. If we're short on paper, that we can't print up the detail, I'll contribute some money so we can get some more paper and that citizens can understand what we're conducting a hearing on. Otherwise, it's just, who knows? It reminds me of, um, the old Mag, Mad Magazine covers. Always the theme was, what me worry? Who cares? Well, the citizens care. We care to where our money's going. We care what money we're getting, and we care why things happen. So please, get us some details on these. Thank you. Do I just stay up here?
Do we have anybody else sign up?
No, sir.
Okay, um, let the record show we closing this public hearing at six fifteen. Okay, item B. In order to approve the termination of the declaration, um, declaration of the covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the Fairfield Commerce Center as to certain parcels shown on parcels ten and eleven on the master plan subject to the approval of the, of the, of the occupant of the Fairfield Commerce Center. Let the record show that we are opening the public hearing at six sixteen.
Again, the point is, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Randy Bright.
Mr. Bright.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Um, again, the point is why, how much, uh, and I assume A and B are, are somewhat connected, but it doesn't specify it. No, no real specifics here, just the sketchy details. And this, and this is a third hearing. Now, I understand minimum requirements on, on first readings of ordinances. Uh, you can get by with, without detail. And that's can be, that's minimum standard. But this, this is, this it only meets minimum standard for first reading, and it's still not good because it still doesn't list details. Um, you know, we, we continue to struggle with this as a county. Citizens continue to complain about it. Uh, own council members complain about it. If we've got somebody that's doing these, if we, that's assigned to somebody, they either, we need to either coach them up or coach them out from doing this. Or somebody needs to approve them before they become public. This is, is not doing the public any good, and this is for the public. Hearings are for the public. The public is asking for details so we can understand what you're doing and give intelligent input. Besides asking questions, what is it? Okay, I'm, I'm done for that one. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else ask to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, let the record show we closing this public hearing at six eighteen. Um, item C. In order to amend the appropriation of funds received by Fairfield County from the American Rescue Plan to account for an SS appropriation shown by reconciliation following the third reading amendment to order seven seven eight.
With all, um, oh, I'm sorry.
So do we have anybody?
Yes, sir.
So we open this public hearing at six eighteen. We have someone to speak?
Yes, sir. Randy Bright.
Mr. Bright.
Thank you. Uh, again, lots of misses here without detail. But also a big miss why we're having to do this in the first place. If I recall, we made a hasty decision on doling out the, what we thought were the funds. Very hasty decision, despite advice otherwise. We went ahead and proceeded, and now we're paying the price by trying to shore up the deficit that we created ourselves. The hastiness had a lot to do with it. But more importantly, if we knew where we stood financially, we wouldn't have to be doing this. This is just an example, another example I should emphasize, of not being on top of our financial situation creates a lot of problems. And again, I say, I don't know how you can vote on spending. I think on this, the total on this sheet or this meeting is like a million five. How can you spend, vote on a million five when you don't even know? You haven't done an audit in over a year, despite state guidelines. You, which means you haven't done a balance sheet in over a year, which means you haven't done an income statement in over a year. If you vote on this stuff, you're voting blindly. Open your eyes, vote appropriately, or close your eyes and stick it to the taxpayer. Decision's yours. That's it. Thank you.
No one else, sir?
I'm gonna ask time. Let the record show we closing this public hearing at six twenty. Okay, item D. In order to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars to the Economic Development Department to, to construct a speculative building for future economic development needs from the proceeds received from the sale of Fairfield County property to Old Castle APG South Incorporated in two thousand twenty-one, which was approved by the Fairfield County Council in order seven fifty-four as a part of the project wins agreement. Um, do we have any, any, I want to open the, the, um, public hearing up at six twenty-one. Do we have anyone to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Randy Bright.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, again, being a Tom Sawyer, painting the fence, same story. We can't vote on something if we don't know our financial condition. And we already repeated, we haven't done an audit in over a year, despite state guidelines. Perhaps now we've got that ball rolling. You saw, uh, a post some time ago in, in Saving Fairfield pointing that out, and maybe you guys saw it and finally started the ball rolling. I hope so. Um, a million five to me and to all taxpayers is no laughing matter, quite frankly. Voting on a million five without understanding what you're voting on is no laughing matter. Some may consider it that, but to me, it's not.
Okay, um, item.
I'm done.
Let's, let the record show that this, um, public hearing is closed out at, um, six twenty-two. Now the speakers, so now item B. In order to grant a right of refusal on sale of a certain parcel shown on parcel three on the master development plan for the Fairfield Commerce Center.
That's the one I asked for to be removed, but we had a second reading on it.
Okay, you want the public hearing to be, um, you know, you can do a public hearing without, it, it's gonna be removed from the.
You want to go ahead and proceed?
Yes. Okay, um, so let the record show, um, it is now, public hearing is open at six twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Same story. Don't know who, what, where, why, how much.
Okay.
Uh, but I guess it's, that's the, that's the trend. Go ahead and vote. Don't know, understand your finances. Don't know, or at least publicly release any details. It's no way to run a county, no way to run a, a lemonade stand. Decision's yours. Vote with eyes wide open. Vote with eyes wide shut and face the consequences for the citizens, from the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record show that this public hearing is over at six twenty-four. Um, now we down to item eight. Ordinance resolution and orders. First reading by title only. Ordinance number seven eighty-nine. In order to appropriate an amount not to exceed one million dollars from the general fund to be used to pay the expenses relating to the relocation of county government offices into the new county administration building and relating to the relocation of the sheriff department into the new county administration building to include furnishing fishes equipment and moving costs. Can we get a motion to approve?
It's been moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second by title only. So, um, no discussion?
Right.
All in favor? Can have one.
First, first.
It's, it's a presury by title only. Um, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Prose his name?
Name.
So how many nays? Two nays? Okay. All right, item B. Third, third and final reading, orders number seven eighty-two. In order to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Orders number five ninety-nine, provide for the zoning reclassification from R. One Single Family Residential District to R. D. dash one Rural Residential District. The reclassification will rezone the five-point-six acres of wooded undeveloped property indicated as tax map number one nineteen dash zero zero dash zero two dash zero two one dash zero 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 to match the owners' joining. Hit the nine-point-eight-nine of R. D. One Tax Map one twenty dash zero zero dash zero one dash zero four two dash zero 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 and combine the two properties. The property is owned by Christian H. and Amber J. Wallace. Can we get a motion?
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Um, any discussion? That was it. Okay. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Prose his name? Let the record show seven zero. Um, item C. I'm gonna ask, um, council with a, um, let, let us not, let us, um, go into executive session to talk about this one in, in some more detail prior to vote. That's the third and final reading, orders number seven eighty-six. Orders approve the sale of certain parcels shown, parcels ten and eleven, tax map one eighty-four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash one ninety-six on the master plan for the Fairfield Commerce Center. If that's okay, we'll, we'll do that after executive session. Item D.
We, we do D too?
Yes. Yes, we can do that. Third and final reading, orders number seven eighty-five, order to approve the termination declaration of co- of covenants, condition and restriction for the Fairfield Commerce Center as to certain parcels shown on parcels ten and eleven on the master development plan subject to the approval of other occupants of the Fairfield Commerce Center. So item C and D, we'll discuss after we come back um, from executive session. Third and final reading, orders number seven eighty-seven, in order to amend the appropriation of funds received by Fairfield County from the American Rescue Plan to account for an asset appropriation shown by reconciliation following a third reading amendment to ordinance number seven seven eight. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second? Okay, without a second?
There's a legal ramifications, you know, of this, so like.
One, one of, yes, it's, it's, um, just so everyone know, um, it is, it's gonna relate to the county, it could be misappropri. So, um, again, it fail. Um, do, so do we have a second? No second? Okay, all right, so, um, um, can we get a motion then to table this until we come back out of executive session?
So moved.
All right. Third and final reading, um, it's been moved in second that we table this till we come out of executive session. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose's nay? At the record show. Third and final reading, orders number seven eighty-eight. In order to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars to the Economic Development Department to construct a speculative building for future economic needs from the proceeds received from the sale of Fairfield County property to Old Castle APG South Incorporated in two thousand and twenty-one, which was approved by the Fairfield County Council in order number seven fifty-four as part of the project wins agreement. Can we get a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Can we get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are you ready to to vote and a discussion? All in favor, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Oppose's nay? At the record show, seven zero. Okay. Um, item G. Um, can we get a motion to ta- to table this? Um, no, really, um, um, we need to do a second reading. But can we get a motion to table this and, and go to a second reading on seven eighty-four?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Oppose's nay? At the record show, seven zero. Um, H. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero one. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment to the hospital transformation agreement, which is proposed as condition of the sale of the former hospital property now owned by the Fairfield County for the purpose of the sale of the former hospital property now owned by Fairfield County for the purpose of modifying the property restrictions placed on the use of the hospital property as an exchange for the location of a freestanding emergency department in Fairfield County originally by the Providence Hospital LLC, now succeeded by the Medical University Hospital Authority. Can we get a motion to approve?
Three, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Oppose's nay? At the record show, seven zero. Board and commission minutes. Planning commissions twelve sixteen twenty-one, disabilities and special needs twelve seventeen twenty-one. Please receive as information. Um, boards and commission appointments. Before we do these appointments, um, there are two names from District Four. Um, again, um, I think what districts have vacancies is District Two.
I don't have that information in front of me at present, Mr. Chair.
But anyway, um, um, we have two names from District Four, but there are other districts. Now, we can have just one of these appointments and, and just appoint one, or we can go ahead and appoint, um, two of them. But, but the, but, uh, but the, um, planning commission have, um, um, really three vacancies. This would only fear two of them. So we can appoint both of them. Or we can just do, um, um, do the one that, um, was recommended by, um, the councilman from that district.
Mr. Chair, if, um, if I remember correctly, for the appointment for, um, planning and zoning commissions, am I correct that we, it must represent each district, each di- district must have a representative? So, uh, in order for someone from another district to serve, that district that's missing a representative would have to agree.
Right.
So.
You're absolutely right. So, so what we can do tonight then is just have, um, the representative and, and we have Mr. Mr. Roseborough. Um, just give us, um, when, when he make the, when we make the motion, we appoint the one that he recommend from District Four. And then, then, and then we have C and D for the zoning appeals. And then we'll ask, um, next time, um, Dr. Roberts send that information to everybody so we can see who that appointment will be. That's good, thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Roseborough, um, since both of these from District Four, which one you wanna recommend for appointment?
Jennifer Barnes.
Okay. Um, can we get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we point Jennifer Barnes to the planning commission. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposes? No opposers? Okay, are we gonna skip B? C, Board of Zoning Appeals? Do we have a, um, can we get someone to make an, a motion?
Doing both or?
Yeah, um, we, we got two vacancies, one from, from District Four, one from District Two.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay, you wanna do both of them same time?
Doesn't matter, that's fine.
Both of them, um, Mike Brendel from District Four, Mike Watson from District Two. Um, can we get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Um, all in favor, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Oppose's nay? Okay, let the record show that, um, born of, for the zoning appears is, is Judy Breadell, District Four, and Mike Watson from District Two, and you all have that information in your package. Okay. Um, um, old business non, new business non, we're down now to the county administrator report.
All right. Good evening. All right, Fairfield County Community Government is pleased to introduce our new deputy administrator, Ms. Anethia Williams. If you could just wave your hands, let everybody know you're here. Ms. Williams is a highly trained, seasoned, and educated local government professional with nineteen years of progressive local government expertise, so we, we welcome you to Fairfield County. Mrs. Williams has an initial mandate to work on two big tasks for the county. Number one, developing a unified system for tracking and managing capital improvement and maintenance projects. Currently, there are various projects happening throughout the county with multiple project managers and funding sources. Ms. Williams is working on gathering data on all existing capital projects from each department with the project description, engineer, and contractor working on the project, the project funding source, and budget. She's also developing a list of future capital needs for the county to ease budgeting and long-range planning. Having this list will not only allow administration to update council on what's happening around the county, but the ultimate goal is to establish project priorities that align with county needs and council goals. Um, her second big task, um, mandate and task is developing a public information policy about county services and accomplishments. There are many great things happening in the county, and a public information policy will allow us to share information that is timely, accurate, balanced, and consistent. We are responsible for telling our story in a way that builds trust and confidence with citizens, business leaders, and stakeholders. So we welcome you, Ms. Ms. Williams.
Mr. Whitaker, can I ask you a question?
Um, yes. Um, is, let, let's, um, again, um, as, as, as a, um, as a chairman of council, I wanna make sure I, um, thank you for deciding to come to be with us and, and just welcome aboard. Um, um, have had an opportunity to meet with you, work with you on many things. So again, thank you for deciding to come to Fairfield County, and we appreciate you being here. Um, so thank you.
Go ahead.
Ms. Williams, thank you for being here as well. Um, I noticed you said deputy administrator.
Yes.
Um, but I see on here, I think the job posted as a.
Assistant administrator, right.
What the difference is between.
Yeah, so I only recently learned, I posted a job on my first day here. The, the assistant doesn't have the authority to stand in the place of the. So we, we amended the, um, the HR, worked with the HR team and amended the job description and say, the assistant, the deputy has the right to stand in, like if I'm not here. Okay, thank, thank you.
Very good decision, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, so the next item is an update on the comprehensive plan, and what I'm gonna do is read the statement based on if I'm talking to a person who's new to the constant comprehensive planning process. So like a student that wants to engage in comprehensive planning. So bear with me, cause I'm, some of you that have been involved know what I'm about to say, but I wanna go through it and tell you where we are with our comprehensive plan. All right, community, county and community governments are responsible for planning the future growth and development of the community. A guidance document that results from a planning process is the comprehensive plan. And I just, like I said, I'm, I'm doing this like I'm talking to a young person that actually looks. So this is the cover of our current comprehensive plan, you can find it on, so. Just wanted to show you, it's about a hundred and sixty-page document. In Fairfield County, the vision for future growth and development is outlined in a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plans are the backbone of any community planning effort, they outline challenges facing the community, identify solutions, and provide guidance to appointed and elective, elected officials in planning-related decisions. Staff is working with the Central Midlands Council of Governments, a gentleman named Mr. Greg Sprouse from the, from the COG, to update our county's comprehensive plan. Our project lead is Mr. Daniel Steins, our community planner, interim community development lead. This plan is required under the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act of nineteen ninety-four. Pursue it to the Planning Act, the Planning Commission is required to develop the plan and then recommend it for adoption by council. The Planning Commission must recommend it through a resolution. Council must adopt it by ordinance after a public hearing. The plan must be reviewed every five years and comprehensively updated every ten years. Uh, we are working, what we are working on now is the comprehensive ten-year update, ten-year update. Under the Planning Act, the plan must address ten required elements or focus areas, which includes population, that's demographic growth and development trends, natural resources, cultural resources, housing, economic development, community facilities, that's public services, public facilities, utilities, transportation, land use, priority investment, and resilience. For each of these elements, the Planning Act requires us to provide an inventory of exist- existing condition, what does the community look like now, a statement of need and goal, our vision statement of where the community wants to go, um, implementation strategies that identify timeframes and responsible entities. What do we need to do to achieve the vision and goal when we need to do it, and who is the responsible parties? Staff and the Central Midlands COG are currently working on an inventory of existing conditions for each element, which includes data collection and analysis, preparing maps and figures, updating narrative components of the plan. We are soliciting community input, input through a public survey, and I think, um, the survey actually went out today to a number of you, so we are well underway to, um, through our, our comprehensive planning process, and we'll keep you posted.
Um, uh, Mr. Whitaker, would you tell them, um, um, how they can find a way to give their input?
Right, so, uh, uh, you know, one of the, the, the surveys are the first step, but there will be, um, we, a part of the comprehensive planning is, is having community forums to get community input, is a big plan. Um, excuse me, it's a big part of this process, is finding multiple ways to engage the community around the future of Fairfield County. So this is a very important process.
And, and it's on, it is on our county website now, right, for people to go in?
I think so, we, we, we launched the survey, but we're going to, a part of Ms. Williams' task is to do a full um, execution of the process, so we can get it out to as many cities as possible.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, yes.
No, thank you, thank you. Um, we're looking forward to all the work that, that's before you.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, we down now to correct the council report on county council time.
Mr. Gibb. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Whitaker, counsel. In the last few months, I've, um, had several employees of the county to come and express uh, their concerns about things that's going on. It's obvious that our county government is suffering, suffering from low, uh, employee morale. Our employees and our citizens deserve a government which support high level of morale for our employees. But we're taking steps to remedy these morale issues due for us. First, high morale, high employment, high employee morale results in friendly and overall improved services. High employees' morale results in increased teamwork and loyalty. Organizations with high level of employee morale is better retention. Good or bad morale contagious. Higher the morale, the more productive the team is. I would like, in saying that, I would like to see or ask that we consider having a outside uh, survey group to do a, an anonymous survey with our employees to find out and, to allow them to express the way they feel. We know, um, if the soldiers are not happy, then the generals gonna fall on their face, so I think that we need to do something to find out, to, to get our employees' morale back up.
Thank you, Mr. Gibb, any other counsel?
Chairman Bill.
Yes.
I, I, I wanna put on the record also that what I said earlier about the not enough information on the agenda, that Mr. Bill did email me back, and Mr. Bill did call me on Friday evening at eight thirty to assure me going forward that we would try our best to make sure the agenda and the public notices have enough information, and I appreciate that. Um, I also wanna say in researching the boundaries of my district since redistricting, I have no clue what was lost or gained. I said then, and will say now, that is unacceptable. I've contacted voter registration on three different occasions, and they also cannot give me with any certainty what was lost or gained. They should have been involved in the process, but they were not. Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Bill, will you please work with voter registration to get this accomplished as soon as possible?
I, yes, I, I am, um, I've talked to, is it Ms. Stedman?
Yes.
And we're working to get the GIS mapping technology, she just purchased the technology. She just purchased the technology that's going to allow her to do that, so we've been working closely with her.
And, and one of the things, as we, as, as we talk about, whenever the maps, whenever the, um, the approval is done for the redistricting, a lot of work has to go on after that.
Right.
To ensure that you, you, you draw all the lines, you put all the citizens, um, in, in, in the districts and you do all that work, there's a lot of work that goes behind the scene. So when people talk about that, um, we believe that this work will be completed by the end of February.
She's, yes.
Right, and, and, and so, you know, so.
She's working very hard.
That's what happened when the redistricting, that always happened, you got to finish the work, okay? And this time, because of the amount of work that, that the state physical affairs office has done and that she was not, um, that she gone, she had to go out and buy new software to be able to do that and, and, um, I think Newberry County.
Yes, it's working.
Newberry County was, was trying to help her and trying to get all that done so that, um, um, we can get all this work done, but you, but, but, um, I've been getting calls too because people, um, want to know where the lines are, but this work got to happen and, and, and it will happen for any redistricting, thank you. Um, anybody else? Um, if no other counsel, um, can we get a motion to go into executive session? Um.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we go into executive session. Item A, receipt of legal advice regarding utility payment issued pursuant to South Carolina Code. Item B, discussion of proposed contract negotiation pursuant to South Carolina Code. Um, item C, receipt of legal advice, discussion of proposed contract negotiation pursuant to South Carolina Code. Yeah, and, yeah, with, with the addition of, um, 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 eight.
E.
Eight E, the third and final reading order is number seven, eight, seven. So he can explain to us the ramifications if we don't pass this ordinance. Okay, um, um, again, can we, can we, um, can we get a motion to, to, so, um, all in favor? Let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Horses nay? So let the record show, it's seven, zero to go into executive session to discuss this, thank you.
Can we get a motion to um come out of executive session?
So moved with chairman.
Look, it been moved in second that we come out of executive session. Um no action was taken in executive session. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. Poses nay. Okay, um do we have anything else before council? Do we have anything else before council?
Um. Hold on just a minute. So I make a motion for um third and final reading for an ordinance to amend the appropriation of funds received by Fairfield County from the American Rescue Plan to account for an excess appropriation shown by reconciliation following a third reading amendment to ordinance seven seventy eight.
Second. It been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Poses nay.
Nay.
Okay, um how many nays? Let the record show two nays. Okay, anything else? Okay, if nothing else before council? Okay. Let the record show that um the the um the 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 um the ordinance that was from third and final reading that did not come before council that we didn't have a motion to adopt, let them show that it fail um without for lack of motion. Okay.
Motion to the chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Agreed.
It been moved in second. Any discussion? Um no discussion. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Poses nay.